Call the meeting of July 17, 2012, Board of Trustees Meeting to Order and ask for roll call.
Trustee Ash?
Here.
Trustee Brydenfall?
Here.
Trustee Daniels?
Here.
Trustee Glunder?
Here.
Trustee Mattis?
Here.
Trustee Rios?
Absent.
Trustee Townsend?
Present.
Trustee Rios is absent today. As you know, he works in the school district and the superintendent called a meeting of all the principals this morning, so he thought he probably ought to show up for that since they pay his check. So that's where Dr. -- Mr. Rios is this morning. Ask for approval of the agenda with the amendment as was at your place this morning.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda with the amendment. Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. This is our meeting where we reorganize our board and set the various committees or set the various appointments for next year. And so the first thing on our agenda is to select the new -- select the chair of the Board of Trustees. And I will turn it over to Dr. Gibbons for that action.
Thank you, Trustee Daniels. We're open now for nomination.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to put a nomination at this time. Vice Chairman Ash to be our next chairman of the board.
Second.
Are there other nominations? Nomination closed.
All right.
Vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's done. We have a new chair.
Okay.
I couldn't wait to.
This is just one move.
Slow down, Greg. Just slow down.
I presume we're going to fill the other --
Oh, we are. We should fill the other.
The other positions.
That's on you, Mrs. Chairman.
All right.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, may I would like, right now, at this particular time, I would just like to place another name as nomination, that is Wendell Maddox for vice chair. You better not turn it down.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there other nominations?
Nomination ceases.
Hearing none, we'll move to the vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Wendell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make your move now.
All right.
Move.
Yes, we will vote on secretary as soon as the other shift takes place here. I guess so. All right, at this time, we need to fill the secretary, Board Secretary position, the Board Treasurer position. Was there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend, I nominate Dr. Doris Gibbons for secretary position.
Second.
Okay, any other nominations?
Nomination ceases.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mm-hmm.
All right, Dr. Gibbons will continue as the secretary for the board and the treasurer's position. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Vice President Brian Bodie for that position.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any nominations? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations again, Brian. Okay, and at this point, you know, traditionally the last couple of years, what we have done is, in terms of the board committees, you know, I'm going to ask again, as we've done the last couple of years, if you are willing to continue in the committee that you have served on, that will be fine. If you are interested in taking on another committee or would like to switch committees, we'll do that at next month's meeting. Just be sure you communicate with me what your desire is or what your pleasure is. And we did add, once again, we did add a new committee last year, the Academics Committee, and I think Trustees Brydenfall and Maddox were serving on that committee. So we don't want to leave that committee out. We want to continue to have that committee and to fill it. So if you would communicate with me, if I don't hear anything from you, I'll presume that you're willing to continue on your current committee. Is there any other comment or discussion there? Okay, Board Appointment and Designations for the 2012-2013 Year, item number four on your agenda, naming of the bank depositories. You'll see in Attachment A, they are all included. And let's move down through those. I'm open for nominations.
I'm open approval of the bank depositories listed.
Same. Second.
Okay. Discussion? Brian, anything to clarify or offer for us?
I think just the same ones we've had for the last couple of years.
Okay. All right, hearing no discussion, we'll move to the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Naming the official college newspaper.
I'll move that we use, paper we're using currently, the Windock Daily News is our official newspaper.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Appointment of College Legal Counsel.
Motion that we maintain the current college legal counsel at the present time or make a motion to approve the same.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Appointment of the Freedom of Information Officer, who's currently the Dean of Instructional Services, Dr. San Ki Min.
I move that we continue with the current Dean of Instructional Services, Dr. San Ki Min.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And finally, set the day and time of the monthly meetings. There were some discussions or some information sharing regarding a couple of months that we might want to move the meeting due to the needs of the board and/or the college. Our current day and time, of course, is the third Tuesday, eight o'clock in the morning for the regular board meetings. You'll see in your agenda that we're proposing for the month of August, that it be set for August the 19th.
Fourteenth.
I'm sorry, fourteenth.
That should be the fourteenth, yeah.
Yeah. And there was communication from Dr. Gibbons, and then the November meeting so that it doesn't fall the week of Thanksgiving and the break. What was that date in November?
It was the second Tuesday, whatever that date is.
Yeah, the second Tuesday, somebody.
Just moving it up one.
Yeah, just moving it up one bit.
Second Tuesday is November 13.
November the 13th. Thank you, Tamara. Okay. There was also in communication from Dr. Gibbons, note that the December meeting would be scheduled to be on the 18th, and there is a proposal to move that date to December the 11th. Is there any discussion or issue with that? All right, if there's no comment, then I'll entertain a motion to set the meeting day and time.
What, we decide on March the second Tuesday again?
Yes, I believe also for March, the second Tuesday.
Which is March 12.
12. Thank you. So we have generally the third Tuesday of the month at eight o'clock a.m. with the exception of August 14th, 2012, November 13th, 2012, and March 12th, 2013.
I'd make that motion with the addition of December 11, 2012, so it goes four dates.
Okay, that would be the four dates. Okay. All right, we have the motion.
And a second.
And a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Okay, item, Agenda Item Number Five, Approval of the Minutes from the June 19th Board of Trustees Meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we have the approval of the minutes from the July 12, 2012 Special Board Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, hearing no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion's carrying. All right. Audience to patrons and petitioners. We have anyone that would like to address the board, we're going to ask you to move to the podium over here on our left, your right, and please state your name and address for the record.
I'll pass this out for you.
Good morning.
I am Merle Bland with Business West. I live at 8311 Garfield Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas, and thank you very much for giving me time on the agenda today. Before I comment with my message today, I would like to commend the trustees for televising the trustees meeting. I think that's a very excellent move, and I, Business West, along with other community organizations, are urging the Unified Government to also televise its meetings. And I've had a couple of initial conversations with Michael Kimbrough to see if the college might play a role in that effort. I will be brief and to the point. Business West is visiting all local units of government in Windock County urging moderate property tax spending. This is the sixth consecutive year that we have made such visits. I have discussed the budget with Brian, and he said it will probably include a proposed modest increase, although any increase is a concern with Business West members who are mostly small businesses. However, they understand that we must have qualified workers, and we also understand there's been some surprises in the reconstruction of the Walmart Center. Brian suggested that possibly Business West members, along with the State Avenue Corridor Planning Committee, could tour the old Walmart building possibly this fall to learn of your progress. We appreciate the cooperative effort that the college has shown toward Business West in the past, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions or comments.
Questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Merle, we thank you very much for appearing and sharing your comments, and thank you for the compliment regarding the.
And congratulations on being the new chairman.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there other persons that would wish to address the board? All right, we'll move to Agenda Item Seven, Communications.
Mr. Chair, I have one communication, and that's the proclamation from the Unified Government that the debate team received on Champions Day, which was June 28th, and I think that the board members were well represented there that night, and it was a wonderful occasion and just inspiring to see the young folks from KC-KCC receive such notoriety. It was really a wonderful thing. And I'll just read the last part. "A special recognition goes to the Kansas City, Kansas Community College Debate Team. Team members include Thomas Garvey, Ryan McFarland, David Bowers, Tyler Gillette, Joshua Miller, Evan Johnson, Marin Locan, and Justin Parks. We also recognize Darren Elliott, Head Coach and Director of Debate and Forensics; Assistant Coaches Scott Elliott, Mike Kruger, Clay Crockett, Candace Moore, and John Brethauer; College President Dr. Doris Gibbons and Dean of Humanities and Fine Arts, Dr. Shirley Walker. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and the seal of the Unified Government of Windock County, Kansas City, Kansas, Mayor Joe Riordan." Thank you.
It was a really nice program, and our students, we had a good number of them there, representative. And as Dr. Gibbons said, few board members. There should be a copy of the proclamation for each board member, so if you and others. So I got mine that night, so if you did not get one, we'll try to be sure that you did. So, okay, President's Report.
Have Barbara Clark Evans and Janice McIntyre with introductions this morning.
All right, ladies, if you'd come forward.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us this morning. This morning, we're here to talk a little bit about the American Association of University Women, which we now have a chapter here at Kansas City, Kansas Community College. We have a student who is able to attend a conference here, and I'm going to have defer to Dr. McIntyre here because she has been involved with the organization much longer than I have and has been the catalyst of bringing it here to our college.
Thank you. Thank you, Board. Delightful to be here today and delightful to say we do have an AAUW chapter here at KC-KCC. This has been a dream of mine for a number of years. Patsy Kyle and I, in the dark halls of KC-KCC, used to mother to each other on a regular basis. You know, we really need to start an AAUW chapter here, and we couldn't figure out exactly how to do it. We both belong to the Kansas City, Missouri branch, which has over 100 members, and currently, the National AAUW has over 100,000 members. They were established in 1881, and their goals are to work for women through advocacy, education, philanthropy, and research. Our local group at Kansas City, Missouri, is very active in trying to support college women in many different -- thank you, I can see better now. I was on tiptoes and everything, still not making much progress. Oh, okay, okay. So anyway, we started thinking about this and talking about this, and because the Missouri River is between here and Kansas City, we were going to have to do some things and get the okay through the national for the KC Mo Branch to sponsor us. Well, somehow we got that done, and they have been wonderful sponsors, providing leadership for us. And this spring, they sent two students to the Oklahoma Regional District Conference, and then we got to send Ramona to Washington, D.C. to the Student Women Leadership Conference. Our Kansas City, Missouri branch has a number of scholarships for returning women, for women beginning college. I was the co-chair of something called the 100 Girls Luncheon, where we celebrate 100 girls graduating from high school and give scholarships out of that crowd, where they are recognized. Patsy Kyle, at one point, was the chair of the Thorpe Men Luncheon that we have every October, and what that does is that recognizes local authors, and one local author receives the Thorpe Men Award. And last year, Tasha Haas, one of our instructors here, was a nominee. So you can see, this is a very active group. They also have done work for pay equity. They have also established the Women's Resource Center at UMKC, and they work to help women in higher education. And we are delighted that we have accomplished something like this. And we received a Kansas, what is this, a sampler thing, an object of art of some kind. That was a gift for us from Oklahoma from what we refer to now as the mothership in Kansas City, Missouri, and that will go on our bulletin board. And now, I'd like to introduce Ramona, who will talk about her trip to Washington, D.C. that AAUW paid for.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to put this back up, but I'm tall enough.
And while they're doing that, I will say, watch for us. We will be an active group on campus. We will have a program that motivates, encourages, and supports not only women, but anyone who's interested in advocacy and equity and higher ed and getting that mentoring. That was my goal, was to get our women some mentoring here on campus that, you know, also incorporates women out in the community. So thank you very much, and I'll see if they're ready to press the button.
We are. Thank you to the college in Kansas City, Missouri, for giving me the opportunity to go to Washington, D.C. I didn't know what to expect, but when you put 500-plus women together that are motivators and want to be leaders in our country, it was awe-inspiring. The AAW, American Association of University Women, collaborated with the National Conference for College Women Student Leaders, which they very nicely gave it the nickname of Nick Whistle. So that's what that stands for. I had an opportunity to go with them to the United States Capitol. I saw the White House. Phenomenal. After that, I went to their awards ceremony and reception, where they honored six different women in the United States, which was Michelle Martin, Noorjahan Akbar, Liza Donnelly, Maggie Williams, Allison Cohen, and Sandra Fluke. I wanted to touch just a little bit on Allison Cohen because she is the founder of the Alta Bicycle Share Program, which they have just started in Kansas City, Missouri. So if you ever see a bicycle over in Kansas City, Missouri, better get on a ride. This group was from the University of Michigan Dearborn. They are the ones that gave me such a profound impact. When they went two years ago to the conference, they took about three people. They went back to their college, did fundraising, and promoted AAUW. This past year, they took 64 women and two busloads of women to the conference. I would love to be able to motivate our college to be able to take at least one busload and compete with them, because I've kind of made a little thing to go with them. One of the other groups, I met Linda Halman. She is to my right in that picture. And on the left is Lily Ledbetter. I don't know how many of you know Lily Ledbetter. Grace and Grit is her book. She went straight to the Supreme Court when she found out that she had been working at a company for over 20 years, same position as a man, and making 37% less than him. Very profound speaker. I enjoyed that. It was just so awe-inspiring to go there and meet them and listen to them speak. The lady in the middle with the little badge is Kathy Hansen from Hawaii. She and I have kind of made a pact to get voter registration really going at our colleges and get people involved in, let's get out and vote this year. So we are working hand in hand together to set up some type of registration here at the college, and I'm working with Janice also on this. And Linda Sutton, sorry. There's another picture of Lily Ledbetter. My picture's there because I had her sign my book that I got from her. And Bobby couldn't be with us today, but that's a picture of the conference women in Oklahoma. And just my last thing is, do you have any questions for me today?
I just had a comment, maybe a request. There are a lot of activities metro-wide about Women's Equality Day, and they're actually looking at it for a week, and I would love to see the college involved. We're meeting again tomorrow evening, so if I have a chance to talk with you all, I'd love to do that, to see how we might involve AAUW and the college in that effort.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm just curious how you're going to recruit women off the campus. Do you have a recruiting plan as to how that would work?
Word of mouth right now. I, everyone I talk to, I have talked to them about my trip. They seem very genuinely interested. I carry applications with me so that I can hand them one so they can fill it out right there. We are also looking at talking with Linda Sutton on setting up a booth at the Back to School Bash. I'm also involved with Phi Theta Kappa and the SCIF organization here on campus, and I'm looking at possibly partnering with one or both of them in different things we want to do so that we can really promote all of the organizations.
I'm also curious if there's any outreach into the, like, secondary schools, is there any work with high school students, high school young ladies? Is that a part of the program at all, or is...
Because the Kansas City, Missouri group sponsors the 100 Girls, that has been designated for Kansas City, Missouri School District High Schools. But it is our goal, as we blossom and grow and at some point break away from the mothership, that is the ongoing goal here, that we will be able to get started with something similar to the 100 Girls Club here in Windock County. Because that's a very, you can see what an important event that is in a young woman's life, about ready to graduate from high school, but yet she's being recognized for where she is going and what she has done. And I tell them frankly, I say, put that on your resume, put that on your application. It looks good, and it shows that you're serious about higher ed. So we have dreams of replicating the mothership's activities here.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations to all three of you ladies, as well as to Bobby Jones. And I have a sense that this is long overdue here at Kansas City, Kansas Community College, but I also have a sense that with the passion and commitment that the three of you have demonstrated here today, it will grow and it will be successful. And please keep the board informed and let us know how we can support you. Thank you very much.
May I have a question, Mrs. Nelson? The Ledbetter lady, is that the lady that's been fighting for the equal rights for the women in Washington?
Yes.
All right. Great, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
That completes my report.
All right, thank you, Dr. Gibbons. We'll move to the Agenda Item Number Nine, Personnel. Please take note that -- Please take note that on your amended agenda, there is an item for consideration there as well. Leota?
Good morning.
You can tilt that laptop if you're not using it. Yeah, we prefer to see all of you. Thank you.
Good morning. I would like to draw your attention to Item 9, under the Personnel Report. For your information, Item 9, one, please. And for your close, Item 9, Lesson 7, list the corrections before this bond given.
All right. Just cur-, Item 3, Leota, that they're hiring them under the old rate? Is that because of a timing issue? Because I noticed just right above that, we're approving a pay increase for the adjuncts. And should that, Item 3 inclu...
It will be adjusted, sir.
It'll be adjusted once it's approved?
Once it's approved. Timing issue?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. I move approval of the Personnel Report.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leota. All right. Let's move to Agenda Item Number 10, which is the Provost's Report. So, Tamara?
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Before I get into my report, we've got some visitors that I would like to introduce to talk about the teaching academies. I'd like to ask, I don't know if she's, I haven't seen her, Kathleen Boildale. Sorry, Kathleen Boildalen, yes, there she is, and Lori Hewitt. Kathleen is from Prep KC, and Lori is from USD 500, and they're going to talk about the academies that we've done with USD 500. And then I would like to introduce the deans and the faculty who are involved in this.
All right.
Come on in. Sorry.
Good morning, ladies. Welcome.
Good morning. Thanks for having us.
Yes.
I will, I'll get started. We have a couple PowerPoint slides that we want to share with you. I'm with Prep KC, and we're an education nonprofit here in Kansas City, a by-state organization. We serve and have partnerships with six of Kansas City's urban school districts. And I can do, if I need to, I can do it without the slides. What we're happy to be here this morning to talk with you about are the academies. And so, the academies for us at Prep KC are a model where we facilitate partnerships between high schools. So, in this case, high schools in the Kansas City, Kansas Public School District, and post-secondary institutions, such as yours. And we deeply appreciate our partnership with Kansas City, Kansas Community College. What we've done is created a model through these academies, where we bring high school students onto post-secondary campuses, such as yours. We start with cohorts of students. I can do it without. It's okay. We start with, sorry about that. We start with cohorts of high school students, typically in ninth grade, and those cohorts of students have an interest in a particular career theme. And so, in partnership with you at KCK Community College, what we have is a Bioscience Academy, a Teaching Academy, and an Engineering Academy. And our goal with these cohorts of students is to give them experiences on your campus, where they start taking college courses, and they start earning career readiness credentials, or having career readiness experiences, so that we have a pipeline of many more young people who are well-prepared to pursue their two-year degree, their four-year degree, and ultimately enter the workforce in areas like Bioscience, Education, and Teaching. And so, we have folks here with us this morning, students included, who are going to talk with you just briefly. And what we're trying to do is give you a snapshot of the kinds of experiences we've been able to create in partnership with you for Kansas City's young people to, when they graduate from high school through these academies, they will have already earned college courses in partnership with you, so they'll have their college transcript already started, and they'll have a jumpstart in a career. And so, I think Lori Hewitt is here from the Kansas City, Kansas Public School District, and is gonna say a few words about these academies. We're also going to introduce faculty and staff, and have them make a few comments, and have some students speak.
Good morning. Thank you so much for this opportunity to come and share some of the work that we've been doing for about four years with, in partnership with Prep KC, Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and then Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. We are very excited about the progress that we've made, and are wanting to bring some students along to tell you a little bit more about the academies. Our Bioscience Academy has been around for three years, and Dr. Ed Kramer's going to brief you on the Bioscience Academy. And then, our Teaching Academy is a new one that we started this year to build a pipeline into our schools, so we can kind of grow our own teachers. And then, our Engineering Academy has been around for four years, and this summer, they've been at the tech school, working on some pieces. And they, we have some students that are here to show you what they've been working on. So, I'll turn things over to Dr. Kramer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I do want to present on these academies. They're a great asset to the college, I think, and show a true partnership with the high schools and with Prep KC. Liz Winzke from KU Med Center is one of the Bioscience teachers, and Jeff McFarland from JC Harmon. I'm speaking on their behalf, but I'll tell you as a biochemist, that the stuff that Jeff does with them, with these students, is truly amazing. They're doing stuff that you would be doing in graduate school. Graduate research across the hall, from when I got my doctorate degree, was in C. elegans, which is the worm that these students use this summer. It's a microscopic worm. And basically, what these students have been doing is knocking out a gene in the worms that's related to cancer in humans. So, essentially, these worms, their whole genome has been mapped, so we know everything that's in them. And so, basically, they find the counterpart to human genes in the worms, they knock it out, and then grow up the worms to see how they behave in response to that knockout, how they develop. And it's just, to me, this is truly a neat and amazing project that Jeff's done. And he's, it's so tremendous that actually, BioRad, which is a huge supplier of biotechnology materials, they sent a representative to tour some of the facilities around the US. They came to Kansas City, Kansas Community College this summer to meet with Jeff and his students to just see where they, what they were doing, and how they processed through on this bioengineering. And so, I have, first, for that group, I have a student named, I'm gonna pronounce this wrong, I'm sure, but Anaba Garza II. He is from JC Harmon. He's one of Jeff's students, and he's gonna tell you a little bit about what he did.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As he said, we were a part of the Bioscience, well, I was part of the Bioscience Academy, and we took, and we took the C. elegans. We found the cancer part of it, and, I'm sorry, I'm just a bit nervous.
We don't bite, so that's all right.
Well, from the worms that I showed, or I presented, I showed that, how the worms looked in the first place, and then after we inserted that gene, and the worms that I had, since the worms, they move like a snake, and they shed their skin, they kind of lost that kind of technique to shed their skin. So, the worms with the genes, they got shorter and much more clumped up. And really, throughout this whole experience, it gave me an amazing idea about the med field. I had a great time learning from the lab. Actually, when I grew up, I wanted to be an anesthesiologist, and having this kind of experience will actually help me further want to become one. Because now, I actually want to go to my two-year, four-year, however many years I need to be, to actually become an anesthesiologist. More about the academy, though, it's really, it gives you a different feel from whenever you're in high school, because honestly, whenever I was in elementary school or middle school, I never thought I would actually be working in an actual professional lab, working with the equipment that actual chemists or biochemists do. But it's really an amazing thing to actually go for. So, I hope that it continues to go on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also, in terms of the Engineering Academy, they've been down at the Tech Center this summer, building steam engines. And it's been a great experience. They're working in the machine shop, and able to do amazing stuff with Mark Moleman and his assistant, Al. And actually, I'll just make a quick plug before I bring these guys up, is I like this academy so much that my son is doing it this summer, because I wanted him to get an experience working with machinery and get an idea of how some of the machine shop things work out. So, he's been kind of my spy in the academies too. But no, he's enjoyed it very well, and I'll have them come up so that they can tell you a little bit about it. There's Andrew Turner, and he can introduce his students better than I could ever do.
All right.
Good morning. My name is Andrew Turner. I teach at Schlegel High School. I teach engineering and various sciences as needed. This is, like it's been said, our fourth year with the Engineering Academy, and we've done a number of different things. We've worked on the structural components of bridges. We've done programming with robotics. We've built circuit boards. And this year, working in the machine shop, our students will show you what we've done, but we really appreciate the opportunity that we've had here. So, I'll actually let my students introduce themselves.
Good morning, boy. I am Cory McDonald. I go to I-10 Schlegel High School. And this summer, we have been building steam engines. And it's a six-week course that we started off with. And then, they give us a print in a box of parts, and a lot of the parts are not made. So, we go in the machine shop, and we machine a lot of the parts. So, first off, we machine a flywheel, and then, well, let me explain how the machine works. Well, basically, how the machine works is, there's a fuel cup down right by, by the piston, which it heats up. And then, that hot air goes into the air supply piston, which moves the drive piston. And that's basically how it works. And we made a lot of parts by hand, or on a lathe, or a water jet cutter. Or we did on a water jet cutter, have to drill out holes in the mill, or have to cut it with a bandsaw, and stuff like that. But it was a very great experience to see how, actually, how the man work goes into a design of a project, and how precise you have to be. Because if it was only, we have to be within 2,000ths. We can be within 2,000ths. So, that's very, very precise. It's about the thickness of your hair cut in half, so that's how close we can be off. But overall, the machine works, and we had a great time.
Thank you, Cory.
Hi, I'm Chelsea Buckner Lyons. I go to JC Harmon High School, and I've actually been in the Engineering Academy for two years. Overall, what the Engineering Academy is, is that they pick students, certain students, that they feel as if can work in the Engineering Academy. And we go into the machine shop, and I really want to put this in there, we've been in the machine shop from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM every day, besides Fridays, but... And we measure everything, and just get everything in order, and make sure we have a list of what we want to do. We're in certain groups, so everybody has different tasks to do every day, and it's not as easy as it looks, but we've got it done.
Thank you.
How you doing? My name's Al Monkowitz. I'm one of the instructors for the engineering group. This is, maybe my second year, first year was when I was coming to school here. I had a great opportunity to bring these students in and show them that they've never been in front of one of the machines, like a lathe, or the mill, or the water jet, or a laser, and teach them the opportunity, because they're engineers. To me, engineers need to know what they're making. If they have hands-on, that gives them better aspect of what they put people out in the shop through, as far as their drawings, how close they have to be, where they position everything, and all that stuff. I mean, it is a great opportunity. I loved it. It's been six weeks. This is the final week. I'm hoping we've got six of them built. Hopefully, we put the fuel in them, and it works out okay. Thanks.
I'd just like to add one thing, that it's really a great opportunity, not only for the students to get a little bit of college credit, but it's nice for us as teachers to work with college faculty as well, and the students to see us working together. So, we appreciate this opportunity. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Allison Hartnett. I'm with the Physics Department. And I've been with the Engineering Academy for the last four years. This year, I haven't been as involved, because I have a baby. But I'd like to say just how incredible it is to watch these fine students who have maybe an idea of what an engineer does, or an idea of what it might be to go on to college, and to take six weeks, and to mold them, and to give them a project, and to give them an opportunity to grow and expand. And, I mean, neither of these students would ever have gone on to the machine shop. They'd never have these skills. These are skills that they can take with them if they choose to do engineering. It's skills that they can take with them if they choose to go with a non-traditional route. And in the meantime, we have these students that were slowly imparting the idea of, this is what college is, and this is what a college campus is, this is what a college course is like. And these are the expectations that you will need when you go on to college. So, it's a great program. I truly enjoy it. It's been fun watching Biosciences and Teaching Academies also, but thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Thank you.
And I just want to add that really Allison and Marissa Gray deserve the biggest amount of credit on the Engineering, all of these academies happening here at KCKCC, because they brought in to the college the partnership that's been built and developed between Prep KC and USD 500. Allison has a future engineer there with her, but I truly appreciate my chance to work with this, but it really is an after step for me. But I also want to, I'm gonna hand you a sheet on the closing ceremony for the Engineering Academy, but I'm also, at that time, gonna call up Chuck Wilson, so that he can introduce a new academy that started this summer that's also part of this program.
While Dr. Wilson's coming up, I do want to acknowledge that Dean Cliff Smith, who isn't here today, he's actually on vacation. He was also very helpful and partly responsible for the Engineering Academy at the Tech Center. So, you know, just so that we recognize that. And Dr. Wilson is gonna come up and introduce Dr. Hira Nair for the Teaching Academy.
All right. Dr. Chuck?
Good morning.
Good morning. And that's all I'm gonna do, is introduce these other folks. It's been a, it's been a pleasure, and it's, in some ways, it's been a challenge to get this off the ground. But I think, working with all the folks from the district and KC Prep, that we've made an excellent beginning with students this summer. And I want to say how much I thank Dr. Nair, who's our education coordinator, and Sandy Van Sais, I thought I said, yes. Sandy had to leave. But Sandy was the instructor that we selected to work with the students this summer. And I think Dr. Daniels, at least, I remember attending the closing ceremony for the academy. I don't remember who else was there. But we've got good students in this district, and we've got good faculty in both the district and this college, who are doing good things for our students, as they progress from elementary up to where we are. And let me also say that the Provost deserves a little credit as well. She and I work together to sort of coordinate our efforts here, and we appreciate all the support that you've given us to this. Dr. Nair.
Thank you, Chuck.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me to speak about the Teaching Academy. As Dr. Wilson and Tamara have mentioned, that this is the first year we've offered the Teaching Academy. And we all understand that K through 12 teaching needs to be hammered, touched, cuddled, and a lot of TLC in order to get our teachers more prepared for the current high-stakes testing environment that we have in our country. So as part of the academy, I want to mention what the student experiences were. The student was made aware of the teaching career in relation to self. So they were in touch with who they are as people in connection to the role of teaching. They were also exposed to the various careers in teaching. So it was not only the teacher who came to speak with them, but a variety of different career opportunities were offered. This was done through field experiences, small discussions, videos, panel discussions, which was really wonderful, because they had panels from KC-KCC that were there to talk about the admissions and the financial aid process, to students who are currently in four-year education programs that are successful and reaching their goals in becoming teachers. And there were some student services panels, and there were also, like I mentioned earlier, the teaching career opportunity panel. They went to the, the students were exposed to the learning experience and practicum through the McDaniel Learning Center and the Schlegel Library. So they went to summer school programs to talk to teachers who were teaching summer school. They actually helped them also. We all know that when high school students that are high achieving come to college campuses, they are exposed to high-quality environment, which is through our faculty, in partnership with the, with the high school faculty. They also get an early head start with awareness of the career, awareness of the challenges and the rewards in taking college-level classes. The expectations are extremely clear, and the pathways to graduation are also clarified. They earned two credit hours, so that it speaks to itself that they were ahead of the curve. In, in conclusion, I would say, what are the tremendous benefits to the, the other benefits? I would say the collaboration between the faculty was tremendous. Sandy said one thing conclusively, she sent me an email last night, she said, "If I can't be there, would you just tell them that I learned so much from these high, high school teachers? I learned so much from the high school students who were telling us how, what their needs are, and how we need to fulfill those needs for them." So it seemed to be a, a process that was learning for everybody, that was really good. The second thing I want to say, and I want to thank you after that, is the fact that it was a true community partnership. So we had Prep KC, KC-KPS, KC-KCC, four-year institutions, our staff at this college, the Provost, and the Dean, and a variety of other people that got together to make this successful. So it takes all these individuals to come together to make our teachers well-prepared for K through 12 education. I thank you all for offering this opportunity, and Tamara and Dr. Wilson, Kathleen, thank you.
All right. Board, any questions or comments?
No, I'd like to just mention, I, I did have the opportunity to attend both the final ceremonies of the Biosciences and Teacher thing. A lot of credit to Prep KC, I think sometimes they don't get the credit they deserve, because they, they do some things behind the scenes, so Kathleen thanks a lot for that. It was really inspiring to see that, what these students learned in those weeks. I went in and had the Bioscience students were doing some demonstration, and I asked a couple of them, could they tell me what they were doing? About the fourth word, they were out of my league. They were, they were talking about things I had no clue on, but it was really interesting, when you ask them specifically, they could explain it to you. I mean, they could give it down in language, or even I could understand what they were talking about, but it was pretty awesome. The teaching thing, I thought, two things were really important. Number one, when those students go into teaching in the classes this year, they're going to be looking at their teachers in a whole different way. And those teachers would be under some pressure, I think, as to what, how they're teaching their kids, because these kids had some real ideas. The second one was, it was interesting that one or two of the students decided maybe teaching wasn't for them. And I think that's just as important as deciding it is for them, that they had these experiences. And a couple of them said, "Well, you know, maybe," well, I think one of them said, "No, I don't want to do this anymore." And maybe one of them said, "I'll have to think about it." So I just think they were great experiences, and congratulations to everybody for doing it, I think it's great partnerships. And I know the kids are getting a lot out of it, I'm looking forward to the Engineering graduation ceremony this week, I think it'll be just as, just as good. So thank you all of you for the great things you're doing.
Any other members? Everyone, thank you very much. The, the depth and the breadth of the collaboration and the partnership there is just the key, I think. And so we encourage you to keep going, and, and keep us informed, and certainly let us know. We are interested in, in partnering with, with you. The, the exciting news last week, that KU Med Center had received the NCI designation is big. It's huge, it's huge, huge. And this college needs to be positioned to take advantage of that. And so I commend staff, faculty, all of our partners from the various organizations, thank you very much. We want to partner with you, we want to increase this collabora-, collaboration, and provide these benefits for our students and our community. Thank you very much. Tamara?
Thank you. And I'd like to ask Dr. Ed Kramer to come up here again. He's going to be introducing a couple of the faculty who have been working on the NSF ATAMS grant.
All right.
Good morning, again. The, the ATAMS grant, this is the second year that we've done it. And it is a, basically a, a program where we bring in teachers from USD-500. We have a variety of middle school math and science teachers, and high school math and science teachers that are there. It's about 50/50 mix. And last year, when we started this, we had about 60 faculty that came in, and, or, excuse me, about 50 faculty that came in and met with two of our, one of our math teachers, and science teachers, several ancillary math and science teachers that were involved as well from the, from the college. And just worked on how to thread and teach math and science in a better way. We hired a part-time observer that went into the classrooms part of this last school year to observe how things are going on that. Liz Hicks, who's an adjunct for us and a former teacher in the school district. She observed a lot of the, of classroom instruction, and then we brought them back this last summer, first week of June, we brought them here again for, and we had only about 20, we had to do a smaller academy. But we focused again on the, on those math and science integrations. So I want to just tell you that this has been a great experience. We're going to try and apply for a much larger grant, to focus in again on teaching. We're going to mainly look, a big portion of it is a strand in the elementary schools, with dealing with the National Geographic curriculum that's utilized for math and science there, because we want to go down even further to bringing up the, the teaching of math and science to the students in the district, and encourage them more. We're also looking at some strands of possibilities of trying to tie into this Teaching Academy that Prep KC started this year, because this is all about math and science teacher development. So with that being said, I want to introduce the two lead instructors from my division, which is Enes Alpakian from our Mathematics Department, and Jim Lyle from the Biology Department. Let them give you a little bit of an idea of what they've been doing with the academies, or, excuse me, with the ATAMS partnership.
Thank you, Ed. Welcome, gentlemen. Who's going to go first? Somebody get a coin out.
Just like Dr. Edward, I'm Enes Alpakian, by the way, from the Math Department. Dr. Edward Kramer mentioned, we did it two summers, Summer Institute. And at each, in each institute, a teacher profile survey was administered on the first day of the Summer Institute, and designed to obtain demographics and Summer Institute expectations from participants. Content knowledge and confidence pre- and post-surveys were administered on the first and the last day of Summer Institute, designed to measure participant content, knowledge, and confidence in ability to deliver instruction on selected math and science standards. Math instrument covered about 24 standards, science instrument covered about 36 standards. I, I was a co-PI in that, in that process, and our job was to make sure that facilitate these USD-500 instructors that came into the institute. And I believe that it was a wonderful experience, it was a great success, and hopefully we'll do it again.
All right. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jim Lyle, Biology instructor here for KC-KCC. I don't know how many of the board members have time to watch television, but there's been an ad that's been running about the United States' level of math and science skills, where we used to be in the top 10, and now we've dropped to 25. And it's part of the MSP to get those numbers up. And, and I first saw that on TV and go, "I'm part of that! This is great!" And I, it's been a privilege, and I have a few notes, if you can bear with me. Some of what we've accomplished is allowing the instructors to hone their math and science teaching skills, strengthening teaching skills in the area of ma-, technology, engineering, math, and science, utilizing collaboration as a bridge to heightened skills, awareness, and standards prep, strengthening and enhancing those relationships in math and science, and the preparation of lessons, and introduction of lessons into the classroom, starting and continuing collaboration between math and science instructors across grade levels and across schools. ATAMS is also serving as a additional resource to help them in more effective STEM teaching, and it helps with the connection between teacher collaboration and preparation of content knowledge affecting teaching student success. And it enhances our link with District 500. I've been able to meet instructors that I never would have met before, they've been able to tell me their challenges, and "How can I do this?" And they said I was the, basically, the pocket lab man. I could pull a lab out of my pocket and help them get it to where it would work in their classroom. And it's been a privilege to be part of this group. And I especially want to thank my Dean, Dr. Kramer, and our Provost for allowing me this chance to be part of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments, board? Gentlemen, thank you very much. Ed, you got a closing?
Yes, I do, actually. I, I do appreciate this, and, and to tell you, Jim, Jim brought it back to my head to, to remind you of this, that this partnership is truly a big thing for us, and that we work with Mary Ann Coleman and John Scanlon, they're math curriculum leads in the school district. And it's been just a great experience to partner up with them, and to, to build on partnerships with existing teachers. We provide them with a lot of materials that they need, there was money to give them a little equipment for their classroom. And better than that, just making use of resources we have that they don't have access to, just because they normally wouldn't utilize that equipment. We can bring it in from our Physics Department. We donated a, an, an older machine from Fire Science, it was a, basically a lab demonstration table that had the ability to pump water through it, so if a classroom didn't have water, they could take this in. And so we donated that to, I believe it was Argentine Middle School, but don't quote me on that certainty, but one of the teachers, I kind of had him tell me who wanted it, and then we drew lots, so. They, we got it to them, and it's, it's a great thing, I think it's important. Math and science, to me, is, is key, so I want to see us keep moving that forward. And just as a last thing, on technology is going to be another key aspect of the proposal we're getting ready to put together. So that's not in there now, and it's been an added strand to the math-science partnership. So we're going to try to put technology in as a, as a big part. And I just want to, very last closing thing, sorry. The Community College being a math-science partnership grant is not completely unheard of, but it's, it's not a major part of NSF's funding. It's mainly been to four-year universities because they have a teacher training program. So the fact that we were able to get this grant, and that we're, we have a chance to move forward on a larger grant, is, is a very big step for the college, so, thank you again.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Excuse me, Ed, how much was it, was the grant? How much money did you get for the grant?
It was $288,000 for the initial two-year time, and-
So it was a two-year grant?
It was a two-year grant, yes.
Was that the reason that you had, yet you lowered the numbers this year, because it just didn't have the funds?
Right. And, and hiring the teacher observer, we thought it was key to get some initial data that we could go forward with in the larger proposal, so, yeah.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Okay, now for the rest of my report, but I just have, just a short announcement, which I heard the news after I'd submitted my report, and that is that I heard from Dr. Wendell that 91.49% of our graduates had a first-time passing rate on the Kansas State Board of Nursing Licenseure Exam. 91.49. Congratulations to Dr. Wendell.
Congratulations.
Okay, and now-
Charlie, have any idea what statewide is? I'm assuming that's better than- That's great, thank you.
Outstanding.
Fantastic, thank you. Okay, now, I've got the annual report, which I submitted to you, and I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions, or if you have any comments, and then I would like to ask for your approval of the annual report.
Tamara, thank you for the report, always interesting reading. Haven't waded through all of it yet, but the one thing I, I keep wishing that we could have included in that, or what are the challenges that the, I mean, there's so many good things happening, and it's great to know about those, but if every department would also include, you know, "Here's some things that we need to be working on, or here's some things that that were challenged," so that the board, the president could be looking at those, and as we're, as we're planning on moving forward, if there are ways we can address those challenges. I just think it'd be a nice addition to the report, if every department would just say, "Here's something we need to work on, or here's some, there's some equipment we wish we had," or, or whatever it might be, I think that'd be really helpful.
Okay, we can do that for next year's report.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Other members?
Yes. It's some kind of way we want to have the, the package before, I got my package yesterday. I, I read most of her report, but I didn't get a chance to read all of it, because I had some other things to do. And I need mine to Thursday before we meet, so I have time to digest everything that's in here, so.
All right.
Want to make sure.
Okay.
Any-
All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, Tamara's looking for acceptance of the report.
Move of acceptance is the annual report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm abstaining, because I have no idea.
One abstention.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tamara.
And when, when you have time, if you could actually read all 171 pages, I think you will be amazed at the staggering amount of work that is being done at this institution, by the Deans, by the staff, by faculty, by everybody. It is absolutely phenomenal. And every year, and this is the third year that I've put together the annual report, and I'm just, you know, just amazed by how much we, we get done. So I encourage you to read it, cover to cover when you have time. All right, and now I've got my actual report, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on my report.
Okay, her report is in the board notebook, so. It is an incredible amount of phenomenal work that has been accomplished over the last year. Congratulations to all faculty and staff members, you know, involved with a number of, and, and a few pretty significant initiatives in there, and activities that were certainly beneficial and speak well to the, the college and its competencies and capabilities, and so we thank- so we thank you for your leadership there as well, Tamara.
I move acceptance of the provost's report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move to the vice president's report. Brian?
My monthly report was included in your packet. I would like to call your attention to a couple items that, one's on page ten, twenty-five million dollars worth of financial aid dispersed this year prior to the summer dispersments. It's probably the largest year we've had. There is a significant change in financial aid. It continues to change at the national level. Summer Pell Grants not authorized anymore. There is a change in eligibility. It continues to be an area of concern for all of us. And so just to keep you up to date, you know, those things, I wanted you to know. Back on page nine, at the bottom of page nine, you will see the number of alternate-format textbooks that we put out. It's one of those things, and right above that, the tutoring requests. Our Academic Resource Center fields a unique set of requirements each year, and alternate format is either Braille, or for a student who has a hearing impairment, I've put in it in a larger font. There's a lot of things, and Robert at the Academic Resource Center is probably one of the leading experts in the nation on doing this, and we're blessed to have his services here. But these are the things that continue to increase, five hundred students last year needing tutoring services, we're now up to a hundred and some requests for students, twenty-seven students needing those alternate formats. And it changes every year, obviously, because the population changes, but it is something that isn't in the mainstream of what people, and we have no, I know, when we talked about this a little bit last year, someone asked about special education funding, there is nothing like that at the post-secondary. This is something that we take on within our Academic Resource Center. So I wanted to bring those two things to your attention, and then I would ask, answer any other questions and ask for your approval of this report, please.
I move for approval.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. Are there any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I had a couple of things.
All right.
One is, on the soccer field, are we going to meet the deadline?
No, ma'am.
We're not?
The question was, on the soccer field, are we going to meet the deadline?
Can you tell me why?
Can you fill us in, Brian?
We lost three weeks on a water issue. We found...
There's water here?
I know.
Water in Wyandotte County is...
Where the west side of the track is going to be now, used to be the baseball, used to be the parking lot and where the bleachers sat, because the western, where you run the hundred-yard dash, has moved to the east because of the change in configuration of the soccer field and the track around it. The week before, the Fourth of July week, with the really hot, hot, hot week, when we cut that field, we went to get, we had it tested so that we could get it ready for laying of the foundations. It was at thirty-seven percent moisture, and it is just an extremely sandy area of Wyandotte County. It's not clay, like everything else around this campus that we've tried to dig into. We went eighteen inches additional cut on that west-side track to take out that water. They left it the entire week of Fourth of July, when it was a couple of days over a hundred degrees. Came back, it had crusted, but right underneath the crust, it was still at twenty-seven percent moisture, which is too high a moisture content for us to put the concrete foundation for the track. It took us a few days to come up with a way to fix that. We used five semi-loads worth of fly ash, which is a byproduct of burning coal at the coal plants. We mixed that into the soil, dumped it, dished it in like if you were a farmer, and used a disc to dish that into the soil, left it another week, so it would have an opportunity to work into the soil and dry. And it is now down to about twenty-four percent, which is below what the minimum is. We can now put the eighteen inches of new dirt back on top of that cut and get going again. And there's just been some other, it's been a two-day delay here, a one-day delay there, a two-day delay here. We paid for a, and I'm not, please, I'm not throwing a dart, but we paid for our new power to come into the site nearly a month ago. That pad is not there yet, and that power has still not reached our area. We are having to run generators to generate electricity, to pull water out of water trucks, because we don't have water at that location, we've never had water down there, and we're still trying to get that in. So to make concrete, to pour block, we're having to run generators to pump water and generators to create electricity. We're still waiting the new transformer from BPU to be placed so we can get electricity. Just, it's a day, and then it's three, and then it's two more, and then it's five, and then it's three weeks, because it's wet, and those things have happened. And ma'am, I do not think we will play soccer this year on that field.
Okay, the next thing is, where are they practicing and where will they play?
They will practice on the field on the west side here, the coach already knows, just like we've done, or excuse me, on the east side, the practice field across from maintenance. They also practice on various high school fields. They play most of their games down in Kansas City, Missouri, at Swope. They play some on local high schools, they play some at Piper. It'll be just like the men's team had to do last year.
What kind of date are we looking at for next year?
Well...
I know they have made up the schedule already, so...
All completion by November is currently what the schedule says. That's the last one I got, but that's after soccer season and way before baseball season, so it's falling in a dead zone between the two. Baseball team will practice this fall off-campus also.
Okay, how do our teams get to Kansas City, Missouri?
We transport them in twelve-passenger vans, yes. And then the games, we either take two vans or we rent a bus.
All right. Thank you, Brian.
I think the next thing on the agenda was the approval for the publication of the 2012-13 budget, and we had our meeting Thursday evening and discussed this, and obviously I've brought, I've brought with me two different versions of the budget. The one that the administration proposed was a one-half mil increase to the capital budget and a flat general fund budget that was proposed, and so I would like to propose that, please. We would move the mill levy from twenty-three and a half to twenty-four.
You don't have no more comments? Because I didn't receive that.
And the board?
Since they left the, the city left the mill levy as it was last year, we're going to get, I know we're going to still get less money because they've collected less, but where does that put us?
On the assessed valuation, is that what you're talking, if you look at the very bottom of the chart there, the assessed valuation is up one-point-six percent to a billion ninety-four million. The other proposal that the board spoke about is a flat mill across both, the capital and the general fund. I guess to speed this up, I will say I have one that's a flat mill levy and one that has a half mil, and ask for your authorization to publish one of those two.
Mr. Chairman, based on, we had a lengthy conversation at our special meeting last Thursday night about the budget, and based on that conversation, I move that we publish the budget that has a flat mill levy and no increase in either the capital or the general fund.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion? I think, Mary Ann Wendell, are you getting your first look at it?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so we'll give you, give you a bid.
A thousandth of a mil because there's around a...
Okay.
I just need those back, because they all need to get signed.
It's the same thing. He just needs to say, this is the same.
Do they have both, Brian?
Yes.
Okay.
What is that, ma'am? Is that one cuts this, there was a half a mil increase right there that came from this capital line, and the other one reduces that half mil. So it remains exactly what it was this year.
Yes.
All right, we're ready, we're ready to vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries, we will...
I'll need your signature after the meeting, Mr. Chairman.
I'll be here. All right, you want to continue, Brian, and we move on into finance?
I move for your approval of the payment of the bills as presented.
I'll move. Second.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I move for your approval of the financial reports. I would like to draw your attention to one thing. On the very back of the financial report, June, the highest per kilowatt-hour in the history that I could find. It also went up an entire dollar from May to June.
Any explanation for that?
Well, yes.
If you provide any reason for that.
And your, and your utility bill at home is going to do the same. We've been, we've been informed that in the next three years, it'll go up nearly fifty percent total because of their requirements to go to less efficient and more expensive, but greener technology, wind and solar, as opposed to burning coal. And so BPU, BPU's going to, it's going to happen to everyone.
Well, I think what's great, not a lot of great things, but the fact that our usage is really down. I mean, I think that says again a lot about the steps the administration has taken over the last several years to really make this a more energy-efficient facility, because we actually paid less last month. I know summer school's less, and I know we don't have everything going on that we do during a normal year, but I still think that's a pretty great statement about what this college has done around energy efficiency.
And we've been very conscious of it, thank you. But it also comes down to a lot of people who have more and more understand that if you walk out of the room, you just reach over and turn off the switch, it doesn't hurt anything. And it truly is across the board, from faculty and staff, that just do little things like that. And so it's been a collaborative, long-term effort.
Certainly think everyone's to be commended, I'd shudder to think what the bill would be if we hadn't have taken, taken those initiatives, and if we hadn't have all grown, you know, personally in that aspect, Brian.
It'd be uglier.
It'd be uglier.
I'll answer any other thing you have on the reports.
Any other questions about the financial report? J.D. is not here, Clyde, he normally chimes in for the financial...
The finance committee did meet.
Anything you care to comment on?
Nothing, but it's in order. The finance committee, their word is in order, if there's any questions.
Brian, remind me, this is probably your end of the instruction, the nine-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-dollar deficit, talk about that a little bit, would you?
And the other night when I briefed you at the board meeting, and we spoke about bringing overload pay, we spoke about bringing summer pay to reality in the budget. This was our reality check. Again, when we checked, we have nearly a million-dollar summer payroll, with seven-hundred-thousand dollars in the budget. Those things had been just going along at that flat number, and we just rang our bell. We were lucky that in other areas of the budget, we could cover it. And so we did not have a budget deficit, we did in that one specific area.
Yeah, thanks for the explanations, appreciate that.
All right, is there, is there no further questions, comments, is there a motion?
Motion to, motion to approve the finance report.
Second.
All right, we have motion and a second. Hearing no further comment or discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Brian.
And then I would last to ask your approval on the recommendations on, under number twelve, numbers one through six, and answer any questions that you may have, if I have to.
All right, approval on one through six. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any comment from the finance committee, Clyde? You all reviewed?
Yeah, we reviewed, everything's in order.
Any other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, Brian. Report from committees. Who wants to start? We have no reports? All right, is there any unfinished business? Okay, on the amendment to the agenda, we have an addendum item down at the bottom. Darryl, I guess I'd look to you, where would be the appropriate place for us to take that action?
You can take it now, Mr. Chairman, and regarding the addendum, you could view each item independently, or you could move to approve the recommendations of the contracts identified as recommended with directions to your president and myself to take other action as necessary to complete the board's directive.
Okay.
I'll move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
The addendum is adopted. And Darryl, we direct you to do as you, as you mentioned, as you said, so, okay, very good. Okay, miscellaneous business. Got the board self-evaluation under there?
Yeah, let me, first of all, I want to thank all the board members for doing it. We got all seven did it, so I think that's really great. Secondly, I want to thank Peggy for compiling the results. Thank you very much for doing that. You've all received a copy. I don't think we need to discuss it today, we don't have time for that. What I put on the agenda was just for us to think about how we want to address it. We talked at one time about having a retreat where we would study it, and it should help with the strategic plan and board self-evaluation, and allow us to help us set some goals or thoughts about what we want to do this coming year. So I would suggest we try to find a time, maybe early August or sometime in August, to come together to retreat and take a look at this board evaluation, see what it tells us and what we want to work on.
Okay, thank you, Ray. Any other comment, members?
I just, I think in going over this a couple of times, that it really does provide a roadmap when we do have that retreat. I think there's some obvious areas that, you know, we need to focus on, and that can set our goals and direction, and for the next, hopefully, review of our progress, maybe in six months. So it was very helpful for me.
Good, I certainly would support a retreat fairly early, sometime in the first half of August, subject to board members' availability for us to do that. I think that's a good strategy. Dr. Gibbons, any comment? Okay, work with us on some dates. Work with us on some dates.
No Thursdays.
No Thursdays.
And if y'all do, I'm always...
I know I'm scheduled to be gone from the third through whatever that following Saturday is that week. Other than that, I should be available. Okay, any other miscellaneous business?
I move adjourned.
All right, we have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming today. Appreciate it.